County Board of Commissioners, we do appreciate your attendance and for the viewers, we do thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Larry Hudkins. And on my right is Vice Chair and Commissioner Todd Wilchin. And Bill Avery is just walking in, Commissioner Bill Avery. I am Commissioner Roma Ammonson, Chair of the Board. And assisting this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. And will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you for tuning in. I thank you for joining in. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
The copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the regular hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.na.gov. Agenda 911 minutes, approval of the minutes to the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, August 16, 2016.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, or claims approval of all claims processed through August 23, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation, recognition of Julie Latimer for eight years, exemplary service on the Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee, Jeff Moll, Lincoln Convention and Visitors Bureau, Executive Director.
Good morning. Oh, I get music for my entrance. Bill gets a tunnel walk and then I get music, so that's pretty nice.
And we're all smiling because that's more money for the coffee fight.
Well, good morning. Very happy to be here today, obviously, to recognize how exciting tourism is for Lincoln and Lancaster County. This is my 14th year, and we've been through so many ups and downs in the tourism industry in the first four or five of that, but the last nine years have been just an incredible ride. And I want to thank all of you on the county board, I want to thank the community, but more importantly today, I want to thank Julie Latimer for eight amazingly quick years of service on the Visitors Promotion Committee. And I won't take a lot of time here because I think this is more about what the county wants to do for Julie and recognize her, but to have her on the Visitors Promotion Committee on behalf of South Point Pavilion, tapping her event production experience with the Downtown Lincoln Association and Up Downtowners, and just she's a key cog in what we do in tourism in that you can call Julie on any given day, regardless of the circumstance, and talk to her about tourism, and she would always put a good spin on things. And I would say personally, I enjoyed our coffees that we had pre-VPC meeting. I was told very early on by Wendy Birdsall, always have the meeting before the meeting. And to meet with Julie, we spent a lot of time on business, but we spent a lot of time on life and talking about our ups and downs and the things that we go through. So I leaned on her with a lot of things, and I do appreciate that. So with that, I want to thank her again for her years of service. We did have our first VPC meeting, the era after Julie Latimer, and Lynn Ireland is our new chair, and it was a great meeting, but we did miss having her there. And the only other thing I would say is, think about the thousands and millions of dollars that we've doled out through the Visitors Promotion Committee. And we sat through a lot of meetings, a lot of hours and a lot of days, and I think every decision that this board and this committee has made for Lincoln and Lancaster County has been for the benefit of tourism, and I want to thank Julie for guiding us along that journey as well. So with that, Deb, I believe.
Julie, it's my pleasure to present you with this small token of appreciation. I've had the opportunity to work with you a couple times over your term of service, and as the Board well knows, the VPC committee spot is highly prized because we get to do fun things, give money away and plan great events and welcome visitors to Lincoln. So one of the things I appreciate most about your leadership is the way you conducted the meetings, making sure that everybody had a chance to be heard, fostering discussion. You are really a wonderful role model for community service and making sure that we have consensus. And personally, when you and I first met, we both had little ones, and now we've watched them, you know, go through school, go through high school, graduate, move on to the next stage of their lives. And I also appreciate the experience that you brought from your South Point views. It's nice to see you on TV and on the radio and in the newspaper, always talking about tourism and welcoming people to our community. So I hope when you see that face, you think of the many meetings and many hours spent discussing grant requests and other inquiries, and you will be missed, and thank you for your service. And Larry?
Sure, we need a picture. Is this official? Yes. Good thing I left weights.
That is a giant mug.
A mug?
Yeah, here we go.
Thank you.
Be careful, that's breakable.
And Larry?
Well, Julie, I just want to, on behalf of the Board too, we want to congratulate you for all the work that you put into it. I mean, you had to measure your rewards in something else than dollars and cents, or you wouldn't contribute that much time to it. But I particularly want to make note of how you were as fair and as even-handed in distributing those funds, and when there was a special need, you always found a way to do it. And what comes to mind is, the last minute, we realized we needed to rock a road and a lane to get to the Cattlemen's Ball, and we found a way to do it. Luckily, it didn't rain that day, but if it had, it would have been very much appreciated. So thank you for your thoughts and always finding a way to get things done. Thank you.
Well, Julie, I just served one year with you, you know, on the VPC. But, you know, in the three and a half years that I've been here, three and three quarters, I've always been amazed at the sorts of things that the Visitors Promotion Bureau, everything that just comes to Lincoln, it's really an exciting one, and yes, indeed, there is great deal of competition to get on that board. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. I know you have a busy morning, I just want to thank you so much. This has been a real pleasure to be a part of this. I've been involved with tourist sorts of things for many, many years, but being on the Visitors Promotion Committee allowed me to see the inner workings of not just what your Board does amazing things, I can't, when we talk about my time, your time is amazing to me. And I was often thinking about, I had the honor or the pleasure of being able to make a recommendation, you are the ones who have to make the really hard decisions and then follow through with them. So it's been huge. We also, I just have to say, being able to see all of these different tourist-related organizations and the hard work that they're doing on behalf of our county has been really illuminating for me. So it's been a great honor, and I will miss working with you. Thank you all so much. And now I have to clean my office.
Okay, all right, well, let's go on to, oh, excuse me.
Next is number four. There are two public hearings. Class CK liquor license application for County Line Bar and Grill at 252 North 134 Street, Suite 500, Lincoln, Nebraska. And manager application for Derek Broman in connection with a Class CK liquor license for County Line Bar and Grill at 252 North 134 Street, Suite 500, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Okay, we'll take these two, A and B, were continued from last week, and I just was going to ask if we have anybody to speak in terms of support, objection, or in a neutral position for items A and B? If not, let's go on to correlating item 6A and correlating item 6A.
This is under new business, a resolution, a matter of application of Class CK liquor license for County Line Bar and Grill, and the corporate manager liquor license application for Derek Broman in connection with a Class CK liquor license for County Line Bar and Grill at 242 North 134 Street, Suite 500, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve liquor license application and the manager application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. For C is a public hearing regarding automatic renewal of Class C liquor licenses issued in Lancaster County and outside the corporate limits of any city for which the county clerk has received no protest, and this is for Crooked Creek Golf Club, Sossas Temple, and Yankee Hill Country Club.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this particular item. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to, in support of, or in a neutral position? Then I will, then, let's see, we need to continue this one for another week then, don't we?
I think Cory said that.
I think he can go ahead.
Is there a correlating item?
Dave Durbin, W County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. We probably really don't need to do a public hearing for these, but we have been in the past. We'll be changing that procedure going forward, but because we really don't need a public hearing and they're automatic renewals, there's not a correlating item, we would just ask
No, there's no correlating item.
We would just ask that the Board make a motion to approve.
I will make a motion that we approve the automatic renewal.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this automatic renewal for these three businesses. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudkins?
I'll abstain because I'm a member of Sossas Shrine Temple.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four, yes, one abstention. Number five is unfinished business, resolution, a matter of the emergency closure of Bridge H-66, Bridge H-120, and Bridge X-9.
So Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Last Monday night, the inspection reports from the county bridge engineer to me at the end of the day caught me a little bit by surprise. And so we made the recommendation to close those bridges last week, and I just want to say that, you know, from Monday at 6:00 to Tuesday morning is a very short period of time, and I come to you today with a little more information about these bridges, and I just wanted to also provide you with a little more information about what the process for scour critical bridges is. So Lancaster County actually has several scour critical bridges. We have 33 which are considered critical as defined by the Nebraska Department of Roads. In addition to that, we have another 21 that we believe are susceptible, but they're not really on the required NDR inspection list. So, and I'd just like to put that, I don't know if you guys have the ability to rotate the map, but hopefully you can see it there. So per the Nebraska Bridge Inspection Manual, "A scour critical bridge is a bridge with a foundation element that has been determined to be unstable for the observed or evaluated scour condition." Bear with me as I totally geek out on the engineering for this for a moment. Furthermore, "A scour critical bridge is a bridge with an abutment pure foundation that has been rated as unstable due to observed scour at the bridge site per item 13 as rated a 2, 1, or 0," per the code. So, as defined in the rules, the hydraulics engineer will assign a code per item 113 following the interdisciplinary scour assessment team evaluation at NDR. By the way, this is called ISAT for short, which will provide a hydraulic analysis and a scour assessment. So if we look at our maps, our map here that I have up on the projector, the bridges shown with the red dots are bridges that are actually rated at a 3, 2, 1, or 0.
On a scale of?
10.
Okay.
So, per the code, if a bridge is rated at a 2, the facility must be closed. It's very clear. It must be closed until the indicated repairs are complete. This includes, in particular, by definition, if the footings are undermined, immediate rehabilitation is required. The bridge must be closed if it's rated at a 2. If it's a 3, it's considered to be in serious condition, shoring is recommended, there's some undermining, and traffic restriction should be considered. So furthermore, I want you to know, the special bridge inspections that we do are legally required by the Nebraska Department of Roads and federal highways for any of the bridges shown in red on this map, once we receive a rainfall of more than 3 inches in a 24-hour event, or for any reason, the banks flow full for four hours. And you may note that we've had this happen probably three or four times in my tenure as county engineer, where Saunders County Rock Creek, the drainage basin for Rock Creek, just really gets a big rain, and we didn't have any in Lancaster County, and yet that Rock Creek will flow bank full for a day or so, and it's rather astounding. As I state these things, though, what I want you to know is, we still go out and inspect the bridges in blue because we believe it's our responsibility in my office. It's a higher standard than is mandated by Department of Roads. And the reason we do this is, and you may remember this little beauty from last year, T-171 during the flood. So T-171, prior to the flooding, was a 3. So it, you know, it wasn't one that we necessarily had ever had an issue with. We did inspections of it as required, but suddenly this happened, so we closed it. And that's the reason why we aggressively inspect these bridges. As I also come to you and talk to you today, I want you to know that the problems we're having in Lancaster County really are not, it's not just something happening in Lancaster County. In fact, it's something that's happening nationwide. Sadly, though, our state, Nebraska, is one of the higher rated states for the number of bridge closures and the number of, you know, non-technical bad bridges. But I want to talk a little bit about our surrounding counties so you can get the order of magnitude that we're dealing with on a state level of this. Odo County has 281 bridges, 140 of those are posted. That means 140 of those are considered structurally deficient. 20 of those are closed. That's 49.8% of their bridges are posted, and 7% of their bridges are closed. My peers in Saunders County, and I have to say that this guy's a little sadder this week than I am because he also had to close bridges last week, have 175 bridges that are posted. They have 29 bridges that are closed. So 40% of their total bridge inventory is posted. That means you can't get a grain truck over that bridge, Commissioner Hudkins, that's serious. For 6.7% of their total bridge inventory is closed. In Lancaster County, we have 16 bridges. We have 16 bridges that are posted. We currently have nine that are closed. That's 3% of our total inventory.
Okay, that's a good point.
And I still know this, to those people who live around these nine bridges, this is serious. This is serious. But I don't close these bridges lightly. I don't randomly close them. The criteria under which we close them are very clear. So with that, I'd like to talk to you just a little bit about a couple of these bridges, well, about the first three bridges that I closed. So Bridge H-66, we determined on a special scour inspection because of the 3-inch rain on 8/15/16 that it needed to be closed due to undermining. And this is the bridge by the, there's a Catholic church facility, and so I have a couple pictures of it. I'm going to start first with a picture from '06. It's a nice timber back wall bridge, we've talked about those a lot. In a recent inspection, we did notice, and I've showed you these sort of failures before, that we did have a failure of the timber pile bent, but because this bridge has a redundant safety factor of the second pile, we were still okay. Not great. Still needs to be fixed. So during the scour critical bridge inspection, what we're really looking for is evidence of failure behind an abutment or undermining behind an abutment. And what you may notice in this picture is, behind several of these planks, we've noticed that there is a large hole developing. I don't want to get to the point where these holes are propagating to the surface before we close a bridge, or until it's failed when somebody has drove, say, a heavy grain truck over it.
So that's like a yardstick. Can you estimate how far back in that goes? Is it in there a foot? Is it in there two feet?
The probe is a five-foot probe, so it's about a three-foot hole behind that bridge in various places behind the planks. I've talked to you before about H-120, and H-120 is the bridge on 176th Street, just south of Waverly Road. This is really a beautiful old bridge, and if you have a chance to drive out and look at it since the road is closed, you can get a really good, close look at it. I have to say, as a person, I love this bridge. It's very scenic. As an engineer, this is not a good bridge. We actually bought this bridge as surplus, I believe, from Department of Roads sometime around 1932. We installed it in the Emerald area. When that creek widened, we picked that bridge up and we moved it to 176th Street in 1968. What's interesting, and maybe kind of a fun fact, is we actually picked this bridge up, moved it, and reinstalled it for $14,000 approximately. And I'm rounding there. But since then, this creek has also widened. This is Camp Creek. A local resident, Peggy Brown, told me that she blames Eagle for the widening of the creek, and, you know, she and I kind of chuckled over that, but I think there's something to be said, that Eagle is a growing community, all of its stormwater drains to Camp Creek, and in some of these surges, it could be a contributing factor. So here's a picture that I showed you last week. Here's a picture, just for perspective, on what's been happening to this creek from And so this is an inspection from '06, and you can see, we do have some bank erosion, but we don't have, it's not bad. Here's a picture from the day after the October storm in 2014 of the pipe. So, and I may have, just another picture from the bottom of the embankment, again, from '06. And then it's a little difficult to see, again, because what we're trying to, well, we haven't tried, we've proven, what we're proving up is that we have erosion behind an abutment. We have scour behind an abutment. So we're underneath the bridge, maybe in the dark, taking photos and probing. So here's a picture of what the bridge looked like after the storm from Thursday, a week before last. And so that's why I'm recommending this bridge be closed. Then we have Bridge X-9. And X-9 was built in 1969. So same sort of thing. Here's an older picture of it. Here's a picture of the surface. This is also a dirt deck, probably was scavenged parts to put in here. X-9, I might add, has a traffic count of 42 a day. So not a high traffic count. Here's what it looked like while we were probing it. So that probe is quite a bit under that structure, and you can actually see, we really would like the dirt to be up to the planks, and you can really see where this creek has eroded out on the bottom, too. So H-66 has an ADT of 174 a day, H-120 of 64, and X-109 of 42. Are there any questions?
Larry?
Do you have a picture of the one on McKelby Road around 40th? I think it was just closed this weekend.
Okay, so that is further down on the agenda, and I have a packet of those three bridges also.
Okay, I'll just wait. Yeah, thank you.
Todd?
So, I mean, you came last week. Have there been any significant changes in the status of these three bridges? I don't know if you've been able to stabilize any of them, or?
So we're evaluating these bridges. What we're looking at is, what is the quickest, best way to fix them? You know, as a county agency with this responsibility, I'm going to humbly tell you, we're poor. And so in 1978, one of my predecessors, Engineer Nurburger, went to a surplus auction at Nebraska Department of Roads, and he bought truckloads of bridge supplies. Although I don't always know exactly where they came from or how old they are, they are similar to many of our bridge materials. So we are scavenging through the rock quarry where we have stored these supplies since 1978, trying to see if we can find pieces and parts, timber that matches the timber that is on the bridges that I've shown you, so that we can get them repaired. We will look to similar repairs as to what we did on the bridge on 112th Street north of O, where we were able to dig down, replace the plank, put some mat and rock down. But those are solutions that I need to look at and engineer, and those don't necessarily happen in a week. But we are striving to come up with a solution to get these back open.
Bill?
Last week, we talked about closure of bridges, and I asked you at the time, how many closures we had after the May flood last year? And you didn't answer.
We closed two bridges after the May flood last year.
Okay, and what's the total that you're proposing to close now? Five?
The total I'm proposing to close today is six.
Six. What is so different now? You had one big rain since the flood.
So.
Go from two to six closures.
You know, what I told you in the entry of the, in the beginning of my presentation is, we do what's called scour critical inspections per the requirement. So what happens is, you know, these bridges are becoming worse. We have just been hit repeatedly with very bad storms, and so far, we have held on. And I have come to this group many times and said, we are holding on by a hair with these bridges, and it's not a matter of the question of if I'm going to have to close bridges, but when. And with these last storms from a couple weeks ago, the when is now.
Coincidentally, right at budget time?
You know, Commissioner Avery, I take great offense in that. I am a licensed engineer with a code of ethics, and I am here to protect the public.
And so am I.
Protecting the public and following the standards as set forth by the Federal Highway Administration and the Nebraska Department of Roads is what I'm going to do.
Are there any other comments?
I move approval of the resolution regarding emergency closure.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the resolution, the matter of the emergency closure of these three bridges. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Not voting.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four, yes, one abstention. New business, 6B is setting the annual salary of Jennifer Kowicki, District Court Child Support Referee, at $105,344 effective September 1st, 2016.
I move approval with words of congratulations on your new position. We'll miss working with you, even though you'll still be here, we won't see you as much and appreciated all the expertise you provided.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the annual salary for Jennifer Kowicki. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations.
C is setting the annual salary for Kristen Sabalos, bail of two, at $60,489, effective September 1st, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the annual salary of Kristen Caballos. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Larry, I didn't see you.
Well, I visited with the County Attorney's Office this morning, and this salary is getting very, very close, the starting salary of a county.
and this salary is getting very, very close to the starting salary of a county attorney. I think that we have had a lot of increases in the salary for bailiff, and I, I think that we've gotten a compression in there that we're going to have to deal with, and it's going to be very hard for County Attorney's Office to keep finding people that want to start in the County Attorney's Office. And we're either going to have to raise that level or hold this down, but that's, that's quite a salary for, for a bailiff, too. So I'll be opposing the, the motion.
Any other comments? All right, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
No.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries for yes, one no. D is resolution in a matter of closure of Bridge F-two-twenty-five, Bridge A-fifty-eight, and Bridge A-fifty-nine.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I think we've talked about scour critical bridges enough, so I'll just get right to the point with these. Bridge F-two-twenty-five is located on West McKelvey Road, approximately two-tenths of a mile west of the intersection of McKelvey Road and Northwest Fortieth Street. This bridge has an ADT of thirty-eight a day, thirty-eight cars a day. So this is one of the bridges that we have talked about. We have a number of them in the county, that they are on spread footings. And a spread footing is really similar to what many of your house foundations are set on. It, it was common practice in the thirties and forties to build bridges that way. We don't build bridges that way today. We really lock them into the soil a lot more. The problem with a spread footing is, once the soil is undermined from underneath the footing, it's gone. And you can't really go pack it back in there. Although we have seen some bridges where some interesting attempts were made, they weren't by and large successful. So this bridge was built in nineteen thirty-nine. I think it's interesting to note that it was built for twenty-one hundred dollars approximately. On our scour critical inspection last week, we did note and rate this bridge as a two. Because, and it's a little difficult to see in the picture, but the, there's some water here. But on probing, we determined that there's really nothing underneath this footing anymore. So I'm recommending that this bridge be closed. Then I have the interesting story of Bridges A-fifty-eight and A-fifty-nine. And I drove out on Saturday afternoon to take a look at these bridges, and this mile is heavily used by recreational bicyclers. I had no idea. There was a lot of them out there. So, and it is a dirt road. So I chose to let the bikers have the dirt road, and, and I didn't drive down and actually get to these bridges, because I didn't want to disturb their, their weekend recreation. But Bridge A-fifty-eight is a bridge that was built with that used timber that, that we got from that West Point auction some years ago. It was built in, I believe, nineteen seventy-nine. So this is what the bridge looked like in, in nineteen, or in twenty-oh-six. And then I'll note that when we build these bridges, and we build them from used materials, sometimes they require additional measures to keep them open. What you're seeing in this picture is that this timber bridge has actually had steel added to either side of the timber to stiffen it up. We, we call that stringer, so we're adding support to the stringers. Then what you'll see in this picture is in oh, twenty-fourteen, after some storms, we noticed that, again, here's this bridge. It, it's had some erosion behind the abutment. We spent some money, and we added a temporary fix to the abutment, and unfortunately, this hasn't held either. And now we have an abutment, and we kind of built some stabilization in front of it, and both levels of this are hollow, so I am going to recommend that this bridge be closed. It's, incidentally, with the, the ADT of fifteen a day, I, I don't know if we, one, I don't know why we built a three-span, so it's, it has three twenty-seven-foot spans. It's a pretty big bridge. I don't know why we built a three-span, twenty-seven-foot bridge on a road that is dirt, never been graded.
Can we go back to, so when you see the three spans again?
Yeah, go back to the original. We're kind of about the little pictures in, in engineering. Commissioner?
Okay, I see.
Okay.
This is Rock Creek, and this is also the area that you've been receiving the emails from the residents about the weirs that were built in Rock Creek. Rock Creek is kind of interesting, because in, even in a fairly minor storm event, this thing will flow a couple hundred feet wide. In a major storm event, like some that we had earlier this spring, we had flow a mile wide on this. And if you're to stand at the top of the hill on Ashland Road and look down north of one-hundred-and-twelfth Street after a rain, you'll actually see that water flows, not underneath the bridges, but over the road for a couple hundred feet after a storm.
What was this bridge rated at?
This is currently a two. That's why it's closed. Then just up the street from, from A-fifty-eight, we have A-fifty-nine, and A-fifty-nine is a trust bridge. I don't have information on the trusts, this trust, on where it came from or how old it actually is, but we know that we bought it used in nineteen seventy-eight. So as commissioners and an engineer, we shouldn't feel this is a new thing, that we're trying to come up with new and innovative ways to fix our bridge problem. This bridge placed over Rock Creek. You know, it, it did okay for the first twenty or thirty years. We've really been having a lot of problems with it for the last ten. Here's a picture from twenty-ten, where, and by the way, this was the good embankment, where we had a, what we call a global slope stability problem, and we had slope failure on one side of the bridge. We went in, much as we're doing now with the flooding, and we put down mat and rock. And that's when it was determined, again, this is twenty-ten construction, that we had what our department called a rockslide. Not really a rockslide, but some more slope stability problems. And, you know, once you start having slope stability problems, it's something that it's really hard to go back and, and determine the, the full magnitude of, of what you're dealing with. This is a bridge we've been inspecting a lot. So, again, it's really hard to see this picture, but we have determined that underneath, and the bottom of this is actually the plank abutment. This has flown full many times, actually even this year, a shocking number of times, when we didn't get rain in Lancaster County, but that rain came down from Saunders County, and, and this creek flowed full. So, so I'm recommending closure of this bridge also.
Is that also a fifteen ADT?
Yeah, it is also a fifteen ADT. It's on the same mile. It's actually just down the street. I should say down the road, right? From, from the other bridge. And there are two tributaries of Rock Creek that kind of come together in there. If you look at the map, it's, it's very interesting. There's a couple sections in there where Rock Creek just kind of snakes all over. And I think Commissioner Hudkins could probably give you information long-term about that. I think it's been, it's really been a swamp for a long time.
Many, many years. They even tried to tile it and drain that area, and it's just too wet.
So I am recommending that, that these three bridges also be closed.
Yes, Bill, Larry?
I'd like to go back to Bridge F-two-twenty-five. Just a ton of calls in the, there were some rumors that it was going to be closed last Friday, and then I guess they found out for sure yesterday morning, so a lot of calls last night. And as you mentioned earlier, when you close one of these roads just before harvest time, it really concerns a lot of people, because in this particular one, you've got to go up or down quite a ways to, to get back across. I haven't had a chance to visit with you, but I'm told by the people that called that you're going to recommend replacing it with a box culvert, and it's going to take quite a while to get the permits to put in a box culvert.
So I know that we have had calls on it. I, I don't have a recommendation for this bridge at the time. I know that we have a constituent that called and asked us to replace it with a box culvert. Replacing these things takes a long time. I mean, we have to do environmental surveys. We have to do, you know, verify that there's no long underground bat. We have to verify that there's, you know, no endangered plants. We have to get an Army Corps of Engineers permit, because we're working with Waters of the U.S., so they, they can take a while. The thing that I tell people is, and, and I say it, it's a little bit of engineering humor, so I'll apologize in advance. To some extent, bridges are bad boyfriends. They don't have any feelings. They have no feelings, and they don't care about you, Commissioner, at all. And so when I close bridges, I am worried about harvest. I'm very worried about harvest, because these are the heaviest trucks that go over our bridges all season. And if our bridges aren't stable, the bridge, it, it doesn't care whether it is a grain truck or a school bus or a fire truck. It doesn't care.
Well, we certainly understand that, and that's what I told, well, the last call last night about ten-thirty was Mr. Kramer and the, and his father-in-law, Mr. Bull, farms just a couple blocks away from it, and this is the main road to get to the rest of their farms. Their request was certainly, they understand that, and I did go out there and take a look at it this morning. Did you do a probe on this one to see how far back it's undermined?
It, we did do a probe on it. I, I don't have information on how far back, but I know it was undermined.
Their request is, could, since it's going to take so long to get these permits and, and I guess a Mr. Chase is an engineer in your office. Is that correct?
I have a, a Mr. Chad Packard.
Okay, well, they, they gave me the, the name Chase, somebody that they talked to in your, your office that, that had told them that it was, you know, could be quite a while. The request that most of them said is there a, a chance that you could, if there is a void back there, they certainly understand why it would be a two. But in the interim, to open that up and repack that area, possibly with beams and repack that area so that road could stay open as long as possible before replacement, because if it's going to be a box culvert, that's going to take a while to bid and, and everything else. So we just ask that you consider remedial action there, if at all possible.
So let me talk a little bit about that. So the bridges that I showed you that have the timber back wall, the H-beam timber back wall, those we can, fortunately, and because we have a lot of them, we can take them apart, dig down, pack that back in and build it up. Because we have the H-beams, we have the H-beams to help us. These concrete footings or the cut limestone from the quarry that were built in the thirties and forties, that is just not an option. And so sadly, you know, I'm going to tell you that we, we can't allow that bridge to be open, and I, I don't have a fix for it.
No. I told them that I'd bring this and discuss it, because that's, you know, the, the neighbors, that's, they, they didn't, haven't had that explained to them as to why it can be fixed that way, so thank you for the explanation.
Yep.
Okay, we've talked in-depth about six bridges today. And you said you have a total of nine closed, so the three we had discussed previously. And when I think of like the one in six plan, I can see what's out there, what it's going to cost, and when we might get to it. And then I look at the spreadsheet that Chad did of the FEMA and NEMA reimbursements. We had all the bridges damaged, estimated, you know, cost of replacement, when we might expect it. Can we develop such a spreadsheet for these nine bridges and any one others that you might have to close? Let's hope not. So when we get calls from constituents, we can say, you know, this is the estimated cost, this is, you know, when we might get to it. So I guess I'm looking for a one in six for closed bridges. Does that make sense?
It does.
So I can give you a list of how much something would cost. We're still inspecting these bridges. We're still evaluating them. I, I wanted to be able to come to you with the recommendation for a total program. There is a good chance that unfortunately, I believe I'll have to come to you with more closures first. We will continue to work on that. When we talk about the one in six, we probably won't see these bridges on the one in six, because one of the requirements of the one in six is that I can only budget or project in the one in six monies equivalent to what I have now. So what I do is, and this is the reason why it always happens after budget, is so after the budget is approved, I take that budget and I project that out for the one, which is the year we're currently in, and then the two through six, which is the next five. And, and, and I'm, we're not supposed to put things in that one in six that we can't pay for now. So I project the money I have now forward, and that's what I put in the one in six.
And so none of these nine, not even one, will be included in the one?
That's not, we're still formulating the one in six, but I wouldn't expect to see all of these in the one in six.
Understood.
Some, some of these, the timber pile back walls, we think we can fix. You know, we fixed the one on one-hundred-and-twelfth Street north of O for about twenty-five thousand dollars. Is it expensive? Yes, but it's fixable. Some of the others don't have easy answers. So to some extent, what we're doing at this time is, we're going back and we're looking at the bridges that we can get open the quickest and the cheapest
Understood.
to get them back open, while we come up with solutions for the more complex.
So as long as you can prepare at some point the list that, or spreadsheet I've envisioned in my mind. I hope I've been clear enough that you kind of have an idea. Got it. Thank you.
Todd?
So, so my questions go back to Bridge A, A-fifty-eight and Bridge A-fifty-nine. They have an average daily count of fifteen vehicles per day. How much would it cost to replace these bridges?
Well, these are big bridges, and the erosion problems in this channel are not going to go away. I mean, I think what's interesting about the A-fifty-nine is, from our records, we have in nineteen thirty, the channel was sixteen feet wide at the top. In nineteen seventy, and, and then it was replaced again in like the nineteen fifties, and it was sixty feet wide, and then in seventy-eight, it was eighty feet wide, and now it's wider on either side of it. So, you know, we'd probably be looking at a hundred or a hundred and twenty-foot-long bridge, and two of them in an environmentally sensitive area with a lot of wetlands and a lot of wildlife. My, my gut feel is that they would be at least, you know, and I'm going to compare it back to F-eighty-eight, the bridge we're building this year, was a one-point-two, one-point-three million-dollar bridge. So we'd be looking at two-point-six million dollars to replace this. I really think sadly, what we're looking at here is, this is a dirt road with fifteen cars a day. I think we just need to close this section of road and leave it open to the farmers and apparently the bikers, who I, I didn't know this was such a popular area with.
I do have a question for you. That's kind of a technical one. But what is a, we talk about box culverts and bridges. What is the legitimate span, safe span or whatever, that you can utilize, that a box culvert can be utilized for?
So, so the box culvert, it's a concrete box. It has a concrete bottom. It's really not preferred by the environmentalists right now and the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers in a lot of cases. But where we had a box, we, we replace boxes, and in some cases, they're easier to maintain. In most cases. So what happens is, we keep adding boxes. So you could theoretically have a very long box culvert. Now, we do consider, now by definition, again, totally geeking out on a technical level with you, a box culvert becomes a bridge once it is twenty feet or longer. And a bridge is not by definition considered a bridge if it is shorter than twenty feet.
Okay, any further que, Larry?
In regard to those last two bridges, fifty-eight and fifty-nine, since there is limited access, and again, it's, it's primarily access to farmland and pasture land down in that area, and it's not used a lot, but the, the trails people also like to have it open. Would you be willing to at least consider what are called Missouri crossings? And they use those in other states where it's, they're just put in a tube for the in-stream flow and then allow the, the, when there's flood stages, to go over the top of it. But you post the roads saying that there isn't a bridge ahead. There's just a, a little water crossing. And, uh, it may be an, an answer to where at least, uh, those landowners can access the property without going several miles around. And the trails people could, bicyclists could use it as well and it's a low-cost option. I see a lot of them in other states. I don't see too many in Nebraska, but I have visited with, uh, the Banner County, uh, county commissioners and they're gonna start using some out there, or at least they intend to. So, what are your thoughts on Missouri crossings? You know what I'm talking about?
So, we call them low-flow crossings.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, there's a lot of issues with low-flow crossings. There's a lot of public safety issues and a lot of liability issues. I'm not really prepared technically to answer that question right now. I would need to look at the, um, the Nebraska Department of Roads codes, uh, for our roads and, and see if that is a viable option. I, I don't believe it is, but I don't know that it isn't.
Would you at least be willing to explore that?
Uh, we, we will, we will research that.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions for Pam? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Phil.
How many more closings do you expect?
So, the map that I had up here, um, when I started out, that, oh, here it is. You can never have enough exhibits or pictures as an engineer. So, this map of the thirty-three criti- scour critical bridges that we have, I would say is a map that has a high possibility once, because that means anything shown in red on this map is rated a three. So, on a zero to ten scale, it's a three. So, I think that if we got, you know, we have thirty-three of those. So, I would say potentially, if we were to get hit with six inches tonight and another six on Sunday, we, we could look at, we could look at as many as thirty-three closed.
Thirty?
Additional, and additional damage to, uh, bridges that are not in this map?
With the possibility of additional bridges that are not on this map. We, we don't always know, stormwater doesn't always behave and we don't always know. We, we come up with our best guess on what we think it's gonna do. Um, that's not necessarily what it does.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Okay. We have a resolution. We need to, a motion on?
I would make a motion that we close bridges F-two-two-five, bridge A-five-eight and bridge A-five-nine.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the resolution or direct a resolution for the matter of closure of these three bridges. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Not voting.
Avery?
Not voting.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, two abstentions. Six E is an amendment to county resolution R-sixteen thirty-seven regarding the proposed sale of property generally located at twenty-two oh-one South Seventeenth Street, Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska. The amendment corrects the legal description for the property and resets the sale date for September eighth, two thousand sixteen.
David Dervin W. County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. As my understanding, the board's already been briefed on this issue. As we're going over this with the assessor's office, there's still some questions about the correct legal description of this property. So, we would ask that you approve this subject to finalizing the legal description.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve the resolution subject to final alterations by the county attorney's office.
Second for discussion purposes.
We would hope we could get that done today. The more important thing is that we want the correct legal description in the public notice and we'll go out later this week.
Correct, and it's, it's time-sensitive, so we need to get that in by, um, Thursday. So, we just ask for those two days to make sure that it is correct when it goes out as opposed to rushing and getting it in there incorrectly.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
What, what is the, um, what's the difficulty in, in writing a correct legal description?
Uh, right now, there's some question of the ownership of Lot seventeen specifically. One party has received, um, has received a report from a title and title company that does not include Lot seventeen. Our assessor's office believes Lot seventeen should be included. So, we wanna make sure that that's correct before we move forward.
It's just a portion of Lot seventeen, I believe, that's involved. It's a large portion.
It's most of Lot seventeen except for twenty-one feet approximately.
We believe it's something our GIS department next door can resolve just by placing a.
Is Lot seventeen parking lot?
No. It's, uh, part of the building. There's a, the, the physician's office building and then our property, the Community Mental Health Center, located north of that. Seventeen is on the border of that. So, it just needs to be researched to make sure where that lot line cuts between those two buildings. Now, depending on who buys it, it might not matter.
I get it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is a resolution authorizing installation of a pavement end sign with a one-quarter mile plate on South a hundred and twentieth street, approximately seventy-five feet south of Saltilla Road for north, for southbound traffic in Lancaster County.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this resolution, authorize the installation of a pavement end sign. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is approved with Lancaster County Veteran Service Officer Class Description effective August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen.
Move approval.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve the Lancaster County Veteran Service Officer Class Description. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is approved with Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center Director Class Description effective August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the Mental Health Crisis Center Director Class Description. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is approved with Lancaster County Corrections Director Class Description effective August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen.
A move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the Corrections Director Class Description. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six J is in agreement with the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, the hiring of sheriff's deputies to assist the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Police Department with security at university facilities and the safety of public for university events. The University of Nebraska-Lincoln Police Department will pay the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for the deputies' hours worked at a rate of one and one-half times regular hourly pay plus benefits and also pay vehicle charges if requested. The contract shall expire on July first, two thousand seventeen.
Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. This is a contract we entered into with the University of Police a couple of years ago to provide deputies to help with the football games reimbursed through the University of Nebraska. So, uh, while it's, it's revenue neutral, we, we pay the employees, uh, their overtime rate and then we're reimbursed by the, by the university.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this agreement with the Board of Regents. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is an agreement with the Southeast Community College to conduct five-week sessions of onsite food handling and food preparation instruction for Lancaster County Corrections inmates. The county will pay up to nine thousand forty-six dollars. Term of agreement is August ninth, two thousand sixteen to August tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Good morning, Brad Johnson, interim director for Lancaster County Corrections. Brandon Fishers, uh, the programs director. Uh, this is a program that's been going on for at least a year, as I recall.
Two years.
Two years now. Uh, it's, uh, provides, uh, culinary training for in, the inmates. They come in, uh, it's a five-week session. And they, you know, learn how to prepare food and food safe, safety, and they can actually earn, you know, food handlers per, permits and such. Uh, the intent is to try and provide them with some skills so when they get out, maybe they can go work in, uh, the food industry and provide, uh, somewhat of a living for themselves. So, this is just, uh, a renewal of that con- contract that we're asking approval on.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second that we approve this agreement with Southeast Community College.
And if I could just provide a little bit of background, uh, the Keno Prevention Fund provided some initial funding for the development of the curriculum and, um,
Twenty-fourteen.
In twenty-fourteen.
It is when we started. And if I recall correctly, June of twenty-fourteen, we got started with the program.
And at the time, we also purchased some computers that are used for the GED class from that prevention funding under the assumption that the better educated they are, um, when they leave our facility, the more likely they are to be employed and hopefully not returned, so.
And the Keno funding has also been providing funding for Christian Heritage to do, uh, parenting classes as well as domestic relations class. So, that money is approaching, approaching exhaustion. We'll continue to use it for the dedicated programs, um, that Christian Heritage provides as well as the Food Prep Skills Program, um, until exhaustion and at which time then the inmate benefit fund would cover the cost of the programming.
And because I'm always thinking of ideas and next I would like to start a horticultural program or a training for people to work in that, in that field and so.
Maybe a bee handling.
Well, I'm thinking more, um, working for a nursery or a landscape company, um, that type of training, so.
Well, what, one of the, one of the things of note too, I think, is that, that the provision of vocational training in this area for food prep skills, if you look at the Nebraska Department of Labor Statistics, you will see that, that the need for food service professionals and this curriculum is designed to prepare inmates who complete it, if they choose to do so, to be able to go apply for work and have the skill set they need to be a line cook or a prep cook. And that is, uh, an employment area of growth, um, in this area in particular.
Okay, any further comments? All right. We have motion in second. Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. A was a contract from Nebraska Salt and Grain Company to provide at the annual supply of road salt. Term of the contract is from September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen through September twelfth, two thousand seventeen. The cost to the county is not to exceed forty-five thousand two-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this contract. Any, any, uh, discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is a contract with Industrial Services, Inc. to provide annual services for dead animal removal. Term of the contract is a four-year term from the date of execution. Cost to the county is not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this contract with Industrial Services, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. And it's an amendment to county contract C-dash fourteen dash fi- four fifty-four with Odyssey Travel for the anti-re requirements for travel agent services. The amendment renews the contract from September ninth, two thousand sixteen through September eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to county contract with, um, Odyssey Travel. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Y- yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an amendment to county contract C-dash thirteen dash five fifty with Rochester Armored Car for the anti-re requirements of armored car services. The estimated expenditures for this contract will be increased by three thousand dollars for remainder of the contract term with a revised total amount of eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Rochester Armored Car. Any discussion?
I just, uh, I saw Andy Stevinger, County Treasurer, was here a few minutes ago, but it was my understanding that he'd reduce the need for, for as much armored car services as possible with his new policy. So, I just wondered if this is an, maybe Mr. Walla would know if this is an ongoing contract or if this is, uh, how this, uh, the usage of this is being handled.
Bob Walla, City County Purchasing Agent. Uh, this was an increase in service requested by Tim Januki. And so, they just, for some reason, I can't remember exactly what it was, but there was, um, additional pickups required for something that's been going on. So, they asked for the services to be changed.
So, it's not the treasurer's office, this is from the clerk's office?
I don't believe so. I, I can double-check on it, but, um, I believe it was Tim that requested this.
Well, Tim's usually re- pretty reasonable on his requests and he must feel that there's a definite need for it and I don't think he'd request it, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six P is an amendment to the following contracts with Alamar Uniforms to assign Alamar's rights and obligations under the existing contract to goals beginning May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Uh, this is for C-sixteen, uh, dash four seventeen, C-dash fifteen dash one forty-eight, C-fourteen dash four oh-six, C-thirteen dash two seventy-two and C-thirteen dash three fifteen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is an amendment to county contract C-dash twelve dash four eighty-eight with Catherine Sons Construction, Inc. for pavement construction services. The amendment renews the contract from October tenth, two thousand sixteen through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Catherine Sons Construction. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
She's absent.
Oh, she's, yeah, she, she's gone.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Six R is an amendment to county contract C-dash twelve dash four eighty-nine with Dicky Heinz Mirror Incorporated for pavement construction services. The amendment renews the contract from October tenth, two thousand sixteen through Fe- February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Dicky Heinz and Mirror, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. S is amendment to county contract C-dash twelve dash four ninety with K-two Construction for pavement construction services. The amendment renews the contract from October tenth, two thousand sixteen through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with K-two Construction. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. T is amendment to county contract C-dash twelve dash four ninety-two with Pavers, Inc. for pavement construction services. The amendment renews the contract from October tenth, two thousand sixteen through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Pavers, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. T. is an amendment to county contract C dash twelve dash four ninety-two with Pavers, Inc. Oh, I just, I just did that one, I'm sorry. Okay.
You're all the same.
Six U. is an amendment to county contract C dash twelve dash four eighty-seven with Schmieding Concrete, Inc., for pavement construction services. The amendment renews the contract from October tenth, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. Estimated cost to the county is not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve the amendment to the county contract with Schmieding Concrete. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. V. is an amendment to county contract C dash twelve dash four ninety, four ninety-one with Walton Construction Company, Inc., for pavement construction services. The amendment renews the contract from October tenth, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve the amendment to the county contract with Walton Construction Company, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. W. is an amendment to county contract C dash fifteen dash three sixty-eight between Wayland Engineering Company and Lancaster County for LED emergency light bars, siren warning accessories, and other related accessories. The amendment renews the contract from August first, two thousand sixteen, through July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Estimated cost to the county is not to exceed three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve this amendment to the county contract between Wayland Engineering Company and Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. X. is an amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash three eighty with Greg Electric Company for large-scale emergency electrical services. The amendment extends the contract from August sixth, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We've decided that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Commonwealth Electric Company. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Y. is an amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash three eighty-one with Commonwealth Electric Company of the Midwest for large-scale emergency electrical services. The amendment extends the contract from August sixth, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimate, the estimated cost to the county is not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve this amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Z. is an agreement with Lincoln Pulmonary and Critical Care to provide specialized medical care and assistance to Lancaster County General Assistance Clients who have pending claims with the Social Security Administration and may be eligible for retroactive Medicaid benefits.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Lincoln Lancaster Human Services Director. This is a contract for our general assistance clients who need medical services provided at this agency.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve this agreement with Lincoln Pulmonary Care, Pulmonary and Critical Care. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six A. A. is an agreement with physical Lincoln to provide specialized medical care and assistance to Lancaster County General Assistance Clients who have pending claims with Social Security Administration and may be eligible for retroactive Medicaid benefits.
And I would ask that this contract be placed on hold until further notice.
Okay.
Is it not ready?
Um, no, it's ready. Uh, this agency changed names, and there's some things we need to go back and clean up from the old agency.
I'm just curious, do you know what services F-Y-Z-I-C-A-L provides?
Physical therapy.
Physical therapy, okay.
Okay.
Six B.B. is a grant contract with the Hub, Inc., to provide funding in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred dollars for the Project Hire program. Term of the contract is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And this is state funding. It's funding through community-based aid that is administered through the Crime Commission. Project Hire is an employment program for our youth. Recently, when we've been getting busy with volunteer partners, we've referred a lot of youth to volunteer partners. Project Hire has stepped up and created a program for older kids who need volunteer hours. And so not only are they helping our kids in the community find different places to be employed, but they've also created partnerships with different community organizations for older kids. For example, they have a partnership with Lincoln City Libraries where our kids go and read to the younger kids on Saturday mornings.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve this grant contract with the Hub. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C.C. is a grant contract with U- with Cedars Youth Services to provide funding in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars for the Community Policing Five-O Fun Club. Term of the contract is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And this is a partnership through Lancaster County Sheriff's Office and Cedars Youth Services. Sergeant Tommy Trotter was able to be here today. He's the one that oversees the program, the sheriff piece of the program, so I will let you talk.
Good morning, everyone. As you remember, we started this last November. I've been coordinating it with Cedars. Uh, since that time, we've got a great project going with these kids. There's a, a great group that we've, we've kept in contact with most of them throughout that whole time. Some kids have come and gone, but I've kept the same group of core deputies that we've used, and they've built some relationships, and we're breaking down barriers, and we're doing those things to help, uh, on both ends, make our deputies and the children at Cedars work together, um, understand each other a little more. I think we're opening eyes, and we're, we're making those differences. Now, the things we want to do this year, we want to do more community service projects, so we're, we're looking into cleaning up some roads and doing things like that. We've, we've helped Lincoln Parks and Rec. At one time, we pulled some weeds and done some things like that, so that the kids get a little better understanding of, you know, what the program's about, and we're trying to get them more involved, so that they can help us, help the community, and, uh, they, they get a lot of respect out of that. Um, we've had a lot of, a lot of positive social media that we've put out, and we're getting a lot of support from the public as well.
Deb and Larry.
You know, and also, uh, the opportunity for these youths to possibly see a career in law enforcement. Uh, they're seeing, uh, your work in a very positive light.
And absolutely, and since you brought that up, there was one young woman who, she is looking at a career in law enforcement, and she's very interested in our K nine program. One of the things we did was we brought all the kids down here to our office, and we gave them a tour of the county facilities. We took them out, showed them all of our, uh, equipment that we use, and including a K nine demonstration show. She was very thrilled about that.
Very cool, very cool.
Larry?
Uh, got a call about this last night. A constituent just was looking over the agenda, and they said, "What's this Five-O Fun Club?" And I said, "Well, if it's got to do with the community policing in Cedars," I says, "It's probably a positive program." But do you know where the name Five-O Fun Club came from?
Yeah, one of the first meetings that we had, uh, we, we let the children pick, and we, we threw a bunch of names on the board, and that was what we came up with. You know, Five-O's kind of the slang term for police, and, and we want that, the club to be fun and, and give back to the community as well, so that was the name they chose.
I'm educated, thank you. I can answer their questions now. But, uh, I think it's, it's important. I really want to compliment you for coming here, so we could learn more, and the general public can learn more about it, too. Everybody's really cognizant with the high property taxes we have in Nebraska. Where is this money going, and, and if it's a good purpose, generally, most people are willing to pay.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the support we've gotten from the board and from the community.
Uh, Mr. Trotter, I, I want to kind of echo what, uh, my fellow commissioners have said, is that you do obviously, um, great work, especially in this environment, where you have a lot of issues, um, dealing with at-risk youth. Um, sometimes those relations with law enforcement, um, become problematic, and they manifest themselves into other outcomes that, that we've seen around the country. And I, one thing I do want to compliment you on is, and I do follow you on Facebook and Twitter, and so I really do appreciate the fact that you're promoting this, not only in doing the service, but also spreading the message, because I think it, it does, it's an added benefit for, for the work you do, so...
Absolutely, thank you, sir. We, we have promoted it quite a bit, and, and we do get a lot of support from everyone on social media, and just members of the public, people stopping me, just like they, they did with you, and, and, uh, so we're doing the best we can with it, to make sure everybody's aware.
Okay. I think we need a motion on this.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we approve this grant contract with Cedars Youth Services. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
D.D. is a grant contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln Lancaster County to provide funding in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the power hour program. Term of the contract is July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And this is a program that is administered at Park Middle School. It is for high risk, it's that high-risk time period after school, where we've seen that kids tend to get in trouble after they leave school and before their parents get home. So this puts that kind of gap into place, that stopgap into place. Uh, it's administered right there at the school. They have tutors on site. They help the kids with the homework. They provide a healthy snack, and most importantly, they provide supervision during that time, so... And I do want to mention, too, and I know Sergeant Trotter already left, but he was asked, his program was asked to be highlighted at a statewide conference here coming up in September.
Great.
So he'll have an hour and a half to present on, on this, and to share a lot of the social media and different types of pictures that he's taken.
You know what? We should have him come out to a NACO meeting, too. Wouldn't that be great?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a good idea.
Okay. Writing that down.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved to second that we approve this grant contract with Boys and Girls Club. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, our consent items received and placed on file the following reports. Annual inventory of county real property and county sheriff for July two thousand sixteen.
Move that we approve the consent items?
I'll second that, and, but I, uh, do we have, and this is probably a question from Mr. Egan, have we had somebody inventory this property lately, or is it an updated version from last year?
It's an annual, so it's this year's annual review.
Okay, and you have a copy in your, in our office? Okay, thank you.
And move approval. Well...
We are just taking it.
Yeah, it's one of the two consent items. I'll wait.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve the consent items. Please call the rule.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number eight is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none agenda may do so at this time.
Gary Aldrich, Lincoln, Nebraska. Is the Five-O Fun Club fund, that's a twenty-eight-thousand-dollar question.
Yes, it is.
Tax dollars at work. Ain't democracy beautiful? People are grumpy about taxes. Unlike Captain Renaud, who was shocked by the obvious, few today are shocked, shocked because citizens are grumpy about taxes. The use of some public resources is reasonable and necessary, for my safety sake. The use of some public resources is questionable. I would appreciate the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners not spend money you do not have, and I would appreciate the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners not spend money I do not have. The previous is a consistent and constant and tedious message I bring to public comment, now for several years, for those who listen. Much like pro-baseball, if public comment was easy, well, anyone could do it. Thirteen NRS five zero one et sec, AKA the Nebraska Budget Act, establishes certain practices, procedures, and protocols with respect to the budget of a political subdivision taxing authority. Quote, "The purpose of the Nebraska Budget Act is to require governing bodies make avai- make available information of such bodies so intelligent and informed support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, and observations can be made by those affected." Public comment is allowed by, quote, "those affected." Those affected is not otherwise defined, and so to put a face on that phrase, I will say citizens, taxpayers, owners, me, and thee, and yes, that chap behind the tree. Quote, "to require" is mandatory, not discretionary. The Budget Act does not proscribe or prescribe what support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, and observation a citizen, taxpayer, owner can offer. The Nebraska Budget Act is quid pro quo. Quid, provide pertinent information and allow citizens, taxpayers, owners, to help formulate budget policy, i.e. tax and spend. The pro quo, in return, the budget process is legal, lawful, and legitimate. In theory, citizens, taxpayers, owners are a co-conspirator and/or partner. In fact, the Budget Act is nonsense. Participation through comments on budget formation is customarily weak. The Budget Act would have citizens, taxpayers, owners, focus on Oz and disregard that man behind the curtain. I suspect most or all budget matters for this board have been or will be finalized before public comments by citizens, taxpayers, owners, is allowed or accepted. The real work, the heavy lifting, is done by hired and/or elected personnel at staff meetings, or at a meeting or meetings of some quasi-government association. A gathering where a small number of people discuss and decide what is best for, well, it seems, for everyone else. A gathering that is an unrepresentative snapshot of citizens, taxpayers, owners, where, quote, "public comments are not allowed," end quote. You can ignore, ignore or disregard what I say. Most do most of the time. I think you skate dangerously close to there be monsters here. I have neither hubris or special power to see what others cannot.
One minute.
Thank you. I think I am a person of reasonable intelligence. My usual, usual approach, how does a person of reasonable intelligence decode everyday events and occurrences? In a republic, government is legitimate only with citizen participation. The actual disbursement, FY sixteen, i.e. the money spent, was a hundred and fifty-two million dollars. The proposed disbursement, FY seventeen, is a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars. That's plus That's plus thirty-five million dollars, or up twenty-three percent year over year. You need to revise, or update, or modify the currently posted online budget. Some of the accounts are short.
Comment from Mr. Gary. Gary?
Larry.
Well, I'd like it recorded, your response. I think you were here when I asked a question about the Five-Oh Fun Club and the contract with Cedar's. Were you satisfied with the explanation that the officer, deputy gave?
I have no quarrel with his explanation.
Okay.
Just for point of clarification, that is not funded through property tax dollars. That is funded through the Nebraska Crime Commission and the Criminal Justice Judicial Services Grant Fund. It is most likely federal dollars flowed down to the state level, and that we apply for annually.
And I would also offer that the budget is not finalized and will not be until after a public hearing.
Okay.
Next is number nine, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, at eight-thirty a.m. in room, in room one-twelve of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, due to their attendance at the Management Legislative Retreat beginning at eight-thirty a.m. at the County Extension Building at four forty-four Cherry Creek Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, August thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, at nine a.m. in room one-twelve of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing regarding keynote fund projects and Lancaster County's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, on Tuesday, August thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, at nine a.m. in room one-twelve of the County City Building.